...the day before and then if we decide that there's...
I checked with Jenny to see...
I sent her a note earlier today.
Okay, okay.
I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' meeting of April 15th, 2018. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark will take the role, please. Commissioner McConnell. Commissioner Tompkins.
Here.
Commissioner Hyattman. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greata.
Here.
Commissioner Bone. Any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda?
At this time, if I could, I'd like to make an addition. Sheriff update, move that to 11 AA, so he starts off the new business first. May I have a second?
Second. All right, I have a motion and a support to move sheriff update from 3A to 11 AA being the first one on the list?
Yes.
Okay, discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Proclamation of the agenda, please, gentlemen. So moved.
Support.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes of the previous meetings, A and B.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the minutes of the February 15th Commission meeting and the minutes of the standing committees from our March 1st, 2018 meeting.
Support. Motion support, any discussion on the minutes? Those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Proclamations, did I see one floating around?
Yes, sir.
Please.
This is a proclamation celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. That the acronym for that is SEMCOG, and it's an organization of the seven counties in the Detroit metro area that are responsible for planning and traffic and many other of those types of issues. And it's their 50th anniversary, and so we're adopting a resolution. Basically, it outlines the fact that it was formed in 1968. At that time, there were 59 charter members, and today there are more than 170 members, including cities, villages, townships, intermediate school districts, community colleges, and the seven counties. And upon its formation, it came from two previous organizations. There was the Metropolitan Detroit Regional Planning Commission, which, and the Transportation Land Use Study, and the Supervisors Inter-County Committee. So we had a situation where the cities and counties were in one organization and the townships were in another, and of course, that's not a really good way to solve our problems. And so SEMCOG was formed, and it's an organization that helps us coordinate the work of all of the local governments, cities, counties, townships, to make efficient use of money for our infrastructure investment and improve our government effectiveness. And whereas they have been working on developing regional solutions beyond the boundaries of the individual local governments, actually, back in 1974, when I graduated from college and started work in the Port Huron Planning Department...
1974?
1974. One of the first projects that I worked on was when SEMCOG came up with the idea of bringing a public bus system to the Port Huron area. And that's been a very, very successful initiative for our community, and it's just, I think, a really great example of some of the things that they've done for us. And we just want to recognize them for the regional planning, training, and assistance to member governments, and their public outreach, their support of more efficient management, including less traffic congestion, better traffic safety, better air quality, economic development, entrepreneurship, and educating our region's workforce and connecting peoples to jobs. So they're having their General Assembly next week, and so we're going to present them with this proclamation that has been signed today by the Commissioners of St. Clair County. I will move the proclamation.
Support? Motion support, discussion on the proclamation?
Just a little bit, just to add, because I've worked with SEMCOG. They do a lot of demographics for the 31 municipalities throughout St. Clair County, and the majority of the master plans rely on SEMCOG for the information that they get, and who lives where, and the age groups and all that, anything to do with demographics. Every municipality within St. Clair County uses the information that they gathered, and they do that for all the counties that they represent, and it's part of the...
Anybody else? All in favor? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve items 7A through 7B on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Anybody have any questions or you want to pull a piece out of there to talk about any of it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It didn't sound very convincing, let's try that again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Report of standing and special committees, start down with Commissioner Rushing.
Just a couple. I went to two township meetings this past week, and Ira, they're going to be contacting you if they haven't already, and we're going to be working potentially on a proclamation for Mr. McCoy for all the year's service that he did down in Ira Township. So they're going to contact you, they're going to get all the information. Went to Casco Township this past Tuesday, and they had their annual meeting, went over all the finances, and gave a pretty good report on how the county road commission is working with them.
Commissioner Dunn.
No, sir, nothing.
Commissioner Tompkins.
I believe that each of us has received a communication from Enbridge Oil Company about their project to replace the oil line under the St. Clair River. Enbridge is also the company that's been involved in some controversy about the oil lines that are under the Straits of Mackinac. And we've received a very detailed explanation of that project, the construction methods, the timeframe, and their goals for not only the St. Clair River, a new St. Clair River crossing, which is in the area of Marysville, but also they addressed some of the concerns about the replacement of the lines in the Straits of Mackinac. They ask us if we would be willing to meet with them and learn more about their plans, and I don't know, Carrie, if you've talked with them yet, but it might be good for our citizens to hear a presentation like that. Perhaps we could even invite them to a future Commission meeting.
We have, we've had some of those happen in the past, and they're very, very on target, and they're very good, they're very well presented, they have all their facts lined up. I think it would be interesting, a lot of people are concerned about pipelines, but they really get out in front of this stuff, and I think it'd be a good idea, so maybe we could work that out. Anybody have any objections to doing it that way?
Aye.
Let's see if we can get them to come in. That one gal that does it, she does a very good job of putting those things together.
And they have some really interesting graphics and photos that I think would be very informative to all of our citizens.
I read through that, it was very informative, interesting to see how they do that stuff. It's amazing that they can do it, the way they're doing it, so, very good.
You had the, how they inspect the pipe, they got kind of like a submarine that goes inside the pipe and does an ultrasound that goes through the entire thing, and it's a constant inspection that they do to search for any potential leak that may happen.
Very good. Anything else, Commissioner Tompkins?
Not this evening.
All right, I'm going to take a pass. Let's move into citizens wishing to address the board. We've got quite a few tonight. Let's start with Renee Ratcliffe, who would like to read a poem to us. Keep in mind that you have three minutes, we have a clock running up there, so...
I pass out, my inhaler is in my purse. Anyway, I came across a poem this morning, and I thought it was very, very appropriate for tonight's meeting. By the way, I'm with the St. Clair County Animals Advocate Group, and I think this poem kind of pertains to pretty much everybody, everybody in this room. And let me find it. It's called "You Are Not Everyone's Cup of Tea." "The world is filled with people who, no matter what you do, no matter what you try, was simply not like you. But the world is also filled with those who will love you fiercely. The ones who love you, they are your people. Don't waste your infinite time and heart trying to convince the people who aren't your people that you have value. They will miss it completely. They won't buy what you are selling. Don't try to convince them to walk your path with you, because you will only waste your time and your emotional good health. You are not for them, and they are not for you. You are not their cup of tea, oop, tea, and they are not yours. Politely, wave them along, and you move away as well. Seek to share your path with those who recognize and appreciate your gifts, who you are. Be who you are. You are not everyone's cup of tea, and that is okay." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up would be Andrea Potter, Animal Control.
Hi, first off, my name is Andrea Potter, I'm with Haven of New Beginnings. We used to only rescue pit bulls, and we used to run Animal Control every time a pit bull was only put on the rescue list. Well, I no longer have to do that since AC Positive Support Group has started. I am very proud of what is the changes they've made, the pit bulls are now available to the public, and pit bulls are my passion. That's all I can really say. Not really good at speaking in public, but I very much appreciate AC Positive Group, and thank you so much for what this group has done and changed, and I no longer have to run and rescue every pit bull I possibly can. And I would like to thank Sheriff Donlin for being a part of that change, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Having a hard time reading this, is it Janie Allen?
Janie Aller?
Jamie Aller?
Please.
Let me change it here.
I have been coming to these meetings for a while now on behalf of the group Stand for a Better STCAC, and what I have witnessed as far as real change that has been enacted at RIC is disheartening to say the least. Dogs and cats being disregarded as though they don't even matter by those we've entrusted to protect them, and instead euthanizing them without a second thought. We need real change at AC, and we need it now. We need a director in place who is qualified to take this on, and we need those in charge of making this happen to take the action needed to put it in place. A great man once said, "The greatness of a nation can be judged by the way its animals are treated." That man was Gandhi, and he believed everyone had the ability for greatness, to show great concern for those who cannot speak for themselves, to have great compassion in the face of injustice, to show great bravery in standing for what you believe in, even if it means that you stand alone in doing so. To lead by example and make great change in the event you find yourself in the position to be great leaders. Please be those leaders that our community so desperately needs, and help us make our AC something great that our community can be proud of.
Thank you very much. Susan Atwater?
Hi, it's good to see everybody tonight. My quick little jaunt tonight is called "Animal Actions in You." Linda Paw is a nonprofit organization that is dedicated to education, outreach, and providing resource information. Education and outreach are a very broad topic that encompasses such things as educational seminars, transportation, food pantries, spay and neuter programs, and these are just a few. For any organization that's starting out, there has to be a topic that you focus on. We are focusing on education for our community. Education encompasses such things as animal behavior, animal care, knowing who to reach out to in case of an emergency, or where to turn if you have a question. On April 21st, we will be holding a free educational seminar at the Underground at Sperry's. At 10:00 AM, there's going to be a wonderful speaker, her name is Lisa Raybine. Lisa is a certified dog trainer and currently works for Teacher's Pet. She also works as a consultant that helps animal shelters work toward obtaining no-kill status and following the best practices through reorganization and policy implementation. Lisa will be discussing how to speak dog, understanding your crazy canine, basic dog behavior, and how to prevent a dog bite. Lunch will be at noon to 2:00. For those that are attending the seminar, there will be a discount at the second-floor diner. At 2:00 PM, Jessica Van Coningsveld will be a speaker. Jessica works for the Humane Society, for Huron Valley Humane Society as the cat behaviorist. She created the current cat program that they're using in 2008, and helped create the TNR program that they use as well. Huron Valley Humane Society has an amazing save rate of 96%. Implementation of stress reduction, behavior treatment, and management have been instrumental in saving these lives. One of the current projects that they are working on is clicker training for the cats. The topics that Lisa will be, or that Jessica will be discussing will be how to speak cat, understated ending your crazy kitty, basic behavior and issue resolutions. Our third speaker is right from our own backyard. Sandy Kilby has been active in animal world for over 20 years. She currently runs SNAP. SNAP is a 501(c)(3) that relies on public donations to allow them to maintain their goals and their mission. SNAP has developed out of a countywide need to help the unwanted animal population to get it under control. With this in mind, they offer affordable spay and neuter services to the public. They also operate a foster-based rescue program, finding wonderful homes for unwanted and homeless pets. In the last five years, over 3,000 animals have been fixed at their facility.
If you could wind her up, please.
I am. Sandy will be discussing TNR, trap, neuter, and return, what it is, how people can get involved, and how it will benefit both the community and the organizations. I hope to see everyone there, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up was, looks like Haley Lemay. If I got it right?
Hallie.
Hallie?
Hallie's a high school student, straight A, and she comes every single weekend and volunteered Saturday and Sunday at Animal Control to walk the dogs. She attends Yale High School and is a busy girl.
Hi, I'm Hallie. I'm 14 years old and in ninth grade at Yale High School. I really love animals and want to be a vet. I became involved with the Animal Control volunteers when my mom saw a request for volunteers on Facebook for the Empty the Shelter event we did in the fall. Now, my mom and I walk the shelter dogs on the weekends. Let me be a little more specific about the dog walking. I'm not old enough to actually walk the dog myself. The shelter does have policies, so instead I play with them while someone else has a leash and scoop poop, usually lots of poop. I've noticed a lot of improvement since the volunteers started working with the shelter. First, the Empty the Shelter event was a great event, and lots of animals got their homes, but the low-cost microchipping event was even better. We helped more animals in the same amount of time. Next, I've seen improvements in the dog walking. The first time we walked dogs over Christmas break, we had to take the dogs out the front door. There was people around, and sometimes we had to take the dogs through the parking lot. Now we get the dogs out the side door, right in a grassy area. We are provided with treats, plenty of space to walk with the dogs, and a room to clean their paws off. It's safer for the dogs to go out the side door instead of having to go through the parking lot. The number of volunteers walking dogs has gone up a lot. Sometimes there are more people than dogs. While we walk and play with the dogs, we try to take a lot of photos and videos to post online to help them get more exposure. In the beginning, there were usually four to six dogs that needed to be walked. Now there's usually only two or three. This is great for the dogs. I feel that we really help get the dogs adopted by posting pictures and videos of them. It shows how loving, playful, and fun the dogs are, and the potential adopters can get a sense of the dog's personality before they adopt. It's very exciting to see the dogs we walk and spend a lot of time with get great loving homes. I really miss seeing Trixie, Vegas, Stella, and Bam Bam, but I feel a great sense of pride and joy knowing we were able to help socialize them and get them into a perfect home. I really appreciate the county for letting us help with the animals and Carol for setting this all up.
Thank you, Hallie. Holly DeShane?
Hello, my name is Holly DeShane, and I am here on behalf of the St. Clair County Sheriff's Animal Control volunteers. By day, I'm a special ed teacher, and by the weekend and the occasional snow day, a professional dog walker and cat cuddler. I began volunteering at Animal Control in December for what could be considered selfish reasons, simply because I love animals. I love the calm that they bring to their people, and that their forgiveness knows no limits. I love that when they see me and the other volunteers, they know without a doubt that they're safe and loved, if only for that time. Though after spending the time that I have at Animal Control, I now know that it's not just during the time that we're there. I've gotten to know Scott and Ken, the two officers there, better, and I love the way that they know about the animals. They know their names, they know their stories, and they know their favorite toys. The same goes for the trustees. What a wonderful thing it is to utilize them in such a positive way. When I go to AC to walk, I always feel welcome and appreciated. I think it's fantastic that such a relationship has been created between staff and volunteers that we're able to dedicate our time to the animals and their enrichment, and let staff focus on what they are there to do. By allowing volunteers to do what we've been doing, I hope and believe that things have improved for both animals and staff. The dogs and cats are getting the love and attention they deserve, and staff are able to focus their time and resources on the business aspect of the shelter. A few months into my volunteer journey, there's a part of me that's still there for some of those same selfish reasons. The dogs and cats are still cute, and volunteering on the weekends gets me out of bed at a decent time. I'm honored to be a part of a group that's working so hard to make positive change in the community. These aren't just the talkers, they're the doers. Rome wasn't built in a day, and I know that things still aren't perfect just yet, but I've seen mountains move just since I've started, so I can't imagine what the future looks like at Animal Control. All I know is I look forward to being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Durant?
Hi, many of you know my name, from Sheriff Donlin talking, but I want to set the story straight for those people who believe Sheriff Donlin and the Animal Control has lied. My dog was Max. You guys know him as Sam. He was a puppy that was mistakenly, accidentally, however you want to say it, euthanized by Animal Control. This is what happened, and I in no way blame Animal Control, or Sheriff Donlin, or anybody there. For those people who think I don't know how to handle a dog, I own an Alaskan Husky who's mushed in Alaska. I have a boxer who has IBS. My husband's service dog is a boxer. She's declining, that is why we got Sam. I broke up a dog fight in a kennel. It was my fault, I should not have been there, I should have not put myself between them. Max's kennel broke in the middle of that fight. I called the Animal Control because I needed him to go to a safe place, and I didn't know how to stop a blood, I was bleeding. I got a call after calling them to ask, "How can I get my dog back?" They told me what to do, said, "Perfect, send an officer out in 45 minutes." I got a call back as soon as they realized what happened. Not once did Stephanie, Sheriff Donlin, or anybody in the Animal Control try to cover up what happened. I went 45 minutes later to pick up my dog's collar. Stephanie was one of the most compassionate people I've ever met, she cried with me in there. Forester told me he held my dog while he was being put down, and Sheriff Donlin did everything in his power to make it right. I now have a lovable bulldog from AC that Sheriff Donlin did help me pick out, thank you very much, my husband loves her. She is in her first steps to becoming his service dog, and it is service-connected with the military. I have volunteered, not yet, all the way, because I'm afraid to be in the spot where Max was last put down. Just walking in there right now as a dog owner, most of the time, especially when dogs are euthanized, especially by mistake, I have been told many times, "Oh, well." Not once did the St. Clair County Sheriff tell me, "Oh, well." They've called me, they made sure things were all right, they gave me back Max's body, and they've been with us every step of the way, and I couldn't have done it without them. So I want everybody who is using my dog for pitchforks and to nail Animal Control to the ground, stop, because I support them, my family supports them. The day we picked up our bulldog, we donated $300 worth of food. My husband does not hold anybody with any disregard, and we will continue to volunteer with them and help make change. I just want to make sure everybody knows the story and things can stop.
Thank you very much. Amy Gardner?
I'm reading a statement from somebody who was not able to make it. You guys all have a copy, I would appreciate you looking at the pictures. This is one of the puppies that I'd helped rescue from AC a year ago. I was very upset about the condition that he was in, he smelled like pee, he was very malnourished. I'm very disgusted with the treatment of the animals. Couple years back, I donated food, toys, cleaning supplies, and many other things. I feel that it's very obvious that we have people who do not care about the animals whatsoever running a place that is supposed to be there to take care of the dogs and the animals that come in due to no fault of their own. The rule about puppies being put down for being aggressive is ridiculous. A puppy is a puppy, and if anybody's owned an animal, you would know this. They need to be trained. As for the cleaning, the gentlemen, they go over there apparently to clean out and take care of them, but the treatment is unfair. Animals should be allowed to have a chance, any animal, dog, or cat, and it seems that they let the cats live longer than the dogs, in my opinion. It's just wrong, the treatments of the animals there. They make it seem like it's a great place to go to adopt a pet, but they don't even take care of them the way that they should for people that have a good opinion of the place. It really affects me in a way that I can't explain. Even non-aggressive dogs get put down. I wouldn't mind going to do another fundraiser to give food and stuff, but if they need it, they actually take care of the animals the way that they need to be taken care of. Place is just ridiculous, I wish I could come to the meeting tonight, but there's something, this is I am heavily believing in. So that is from her. I am a volunteer at Genesee County Animal Control in Flint, and as many of you know, our numbers were horrible with the killings of the animals. And I'm reading the statement here on Animal Control's owner surrender records show that in the last six months, Animal Control's killed 42 dogs over the age of seven and 32 cats over the age of five. That is horrible. Why are you guys killing so many animals who are there from no fault of their own? How would you like it if your dog ended up missing, broke away, the chain was off, and the collar was off? But after four days, they're going to put it down? How would you like to find out that your dog was put down? Are those your fur babies, or are they just your pieces of property? Changes need to be made, it's happening with Flint. Our numbers are so low, we're getting a new Animal Control built, we just took out the incinerator that murdered many animals. Okay, yeah, the volunteers are great, but I hear that you have, what, two or four dogs to walk? We have over 80. 80 dogs or more at our shelter, and all of them get out through all the volunteers, and the volunteers work on training. It's not just walking and playing with them, it's giving them manners, it's socialization. You need to socialize these animals before they get adapted out, because if not, you're going to have a problem, and then the animals are going to come back and get put down. You need to make some positive changes here at Animal Control. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Knofs?
Good evening, board and citizens of St. Clair County, I'm Ben Knofs. I'm with the...
I'm with the Animal Control Positive Change Group. I've helped walk the dogs. I've seen many and many pictures on Facebook of our volunteers going and helping train the dogs with basic commands, sit, stay, lay down, shake, speak. We're in there socializing the dogs, we're in there helping them. We're in there cuddling with the cats and socializing with the cats. We're trying to help the dogs and the cats have a better transition from being strays or owner abandoned to get into homes where they are permanently loved. As many of you guys know, we have been in three parades in the last few months. Our first parade was Port Huron Santa Parade. We had a pretty awesome float, that was our first float that we had. And then we went in Yale, the city of Yale actually invited us to their parade, and we won the Marshall's Award and won $120 to put towards our 501(c)(3) that we're trying to put together. It takes quite a bit of money to put that together, but we're working on getting there. And then we were also just a part of the Port Huron St. Patrick's Day Parade. I don't know if any of you saw our float there, but it was pretty spectacular. Miss Antoinette did a pretty amazing job at doing all the glitter work and the garland. But after the parade, we had several people actually come up to us and ask us how they can get involved with helping the dogs and how we can get them adopted. And so, just being a positive presence in the community, being a face that people can go to and ask questions to, I think we're doing a pretty amazing job at that. And also on social media, almost every day, we're posting pictures and videos of the dogs and cats. And we've got, I think, what, two dogs now in Animal Control that are adoptable? One dog now, okay. That's why we don't have 80 dogs in Animal Control, because we have the social media presence to get them adopted, and we're getting... So... But that's why we don't have 80 dogs in Animal Control. We're out there posting pictures, posting videos, getting these dogs socialized and helping them. We've got one dog in there right now, at the beginning of the week, we had three or four. So what we're doing is helping these animals, and I just want to thank you guys for the support that Sheriff Donlin and Mr. Tom Buckley have done for us and what you guys have done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Kendra?
Wednesday night, when I left Animal Control, which was, everybody was getting ready to close up, and I walked the floor, I walked the kennels, and I checked on every single animal that was there. They were sleeping because they had spent the day playing, socializing, and walking with our volunteers. They were curled up on their little rugs, they had had their food. Their kongs were full of peanut butter, waiting for them to wake up. There wasn't one dog that was barking, crying, or anything else. They were all sleeping. And I left Animal Control that night feeling really good, knowing that what we are doing is the right thing to do. We're giving love to those animals, we're finding homes to those animals, and those animals are in a safe place. Some of the animals that we've received have been beaten, some of them have been in dog fights. And they get there, they calm down, and they're loved. And that's all of you. And also, the employees at Animal Control, Scott Forester, he's great. The dogs will look at him and go to him, you know, because they love him. It's really funny. When I first noticed that, I thought, "Well, he's got to be a good guy because they'll go, they'll look at him first before they'll even come to me." So it's growing, it's good, the animals are good, they are not suffering, and they're being fed and treated well. In February 2017, three dogs were adopted and 10 cats were adopted. In February 2018, 14 dogs were adopted and eight cats were adopted. For the 28 days in February, we averaged three walkers a day, every day, seven days a week. And they don't come for half an hour, they come, on weekends, they come for an hour because we're only allowed an hour. During the week, they may be there an hour and a half, two hours, and sometimes I've seen them there three hours. We are growing, and we're proud of it. We're growing. Change doesn't happen overnight. It takes a while to make good, solid, permanent change. We started to initiate an adoption counselor program to assist with adoptions and also proactive redemptions by returning a large percentage of lost animals to their families. And it is working, it is working. We have a girl that's out there on social media every single day pounding out those dogs' pictures, cute pictures, videos, music. We started Monday out with three dogs. We've got one dog left, and probably by tomorrow, that dog will be gone. We're doing our job, and we're having a good time at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Olenbrock?
Hi, everyone. It's good to be back. I didn't get to finish my speech the last time I was here, so I'm going to attempt to do it now. Let me begin. I've been going to St. Clair County Sheriff's Animal Control for many years. It was approximately 17 years ago that I went in and adopted an Old English sheepdog. It was Scott that I talked to back then and found him to be very informative with a calm, pleasant demeanor. Since then, I have had to drop into Animal Control for various reasons over the years and always found Scott to be a happy person to see. To me, he has become the face of Animal Control. I am now a volunteer at Animal Control, and Scott is our go-to person. He always makes me feel welcome when I'm there, and it is so great to be in the company of a truly happy, compassionate person. He simply loves his job working with the animals, and I can tell that they love him as well. His interaction with the citizens that come in to view the animals and the knowledge he shares with them about the dogs and cats, again to me, makes him the face of Animal Control. I find him to be a huge asset to Animal Control, and if our volunteer group could clone him, we certainly would. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Iris Parlangeli? Did I get it right that time, Iris?
Well, certainly not an inclusion of all.
Not saying a whole lot, is it?
Hi, my name is Iris Parlangeli, I'm with the Michigan Pet Food Alliance. You haven't seen me for a few months, I was running a doggy hospice at my house, and I can't tell you how much I teared up about the dog that was put to sleep in Animal Control because I just did the same thing for my dog, and it just chokes me up. But what I'm here to speak about tonight is the policy of Animal Control that when an owner brings a dog in who's over seven years old or a cat who is over five years old, that animal is automatically put to sleep. This is a written policy. It is a policy that we got when we FOIA'd, and so it's a policy of Animal Control. What I did, because I have the access to a listserv that reaches out to all Michigan shelters, I put that out to the shelters in Michigan and said, "What do you think about this policy?" We got back 30 responses. And if you've got a handout, you'll see those responses. These are from peers, these are from shelter directors, these are from people who are trying to do their best for their animals. Let me read to you just a few of them. From the Humane Society of Huron Valley. "What? That's just insane." "Who is that?" "Obviously, they are just trying to reduce incoming population at the door." "For owner-requested euthanasia, we follow ASLAMAR, which is a behavior standard, just as we do with shelter animals. Must be healthy or untreatable. There are no age limits here, and those ages, eight for dog and five for cat, are completely absurd. No logic there." This is from Genesee County, which is Flint, has many of the same similar problems that you do. "Genesee County does not have any based euthanasia policy and does not support any such policy. Euthanasia is based on the best outcome for an animal and is strictly judged case by case, with euthanization being the last resort where there is no hope for recovery or to lessen extreme suffering. For all that it's worth, we do not euthanize for space either." Macomb County Animal Control, of which some of our commissioners have visited. "At Macomb County Animal Control, we do not have age restrictions on animals. Our philosophy at MCAC is that all animals once admitted into our care, regardless of age, should be extended the same five freedoms," and I'll explain those, "as any other animals in our care. To do things differently would be discriminatory. I also think setting age limits for euthanasia reflects negatively onto compassionate leadership or the lack thereof."
If you could please finish up.
Mm-hmm. "Currently at MCAC, we have several senior cats and dogs, all of whom are healthy and active, just older. However, there are amazing people and organizations that are desirous of adopting a senior pet." Okay, I don't have time to finish, there are 30 of them, and I encourage you, please, to read them. Thank you.
Thank you. Chavina Fernandez?
I'm just going to start where she left off. Michigan Humane Society Detroit. "We do not place any age restrictions on our adoptable animals, we love our seniors." City of Warren, Animal Control, Warren, Michigan. "We would never recommend euthanasia based on age and make an extra effort to find good homes, rescues, placements for seniors much older than five or seven. In response to your question regarding euthanizing older surrendered animals, we do not have any policy similar to this. It is not even offered as an alternative unless, of course, the animal is very ill. Also, on a personal level, I find it abhorrent." Monroe County Sheriff's Office, Animal Control Division, Monroe County. "Detroit Animal Care and Control does not include age of animal in ASLAMAR. All euthanasia decisions are based on behavioral and/or medical disposition." Detroit Animal Care and Control, Detroit, Michigan. "Here in Livingston County Animal Control Shelter, we do not have a blanket policy on owner surrenders at all. Each animal is judged on a case-by-case basis." Livingston County Animal Control, Howell, Michigan. "We are an open-access shelter and accept all pets regardless of age. We have a great track record for senior adoptions. The only time an animal would be accepted for euthanasia would be one that is dangerous or has been brought in by the owner for euthanasia due to age or health condition. We are lucky to have a canine hospice in the area that takes in even terminal dogs. Limiting your intake to dogs under seven years old is ridiculous." Sheboygan County Humane Society, Animal Control. There's 30 of these, as she said. "We accept all animals. If the pet is in terrible condition, example, blind, weak, on death's door, we will charge the owners a euthanasia fee and not adopt the pet out. We find that older cats and dogs in good health are just as adoptable as younger ones. Some people don't want that puppy-kitten stage and enjoy a quieter animal. I know I love the older ones." Clare County Animal Control, Harrison, Michigan. And these go all the way to Mackinaw, Lake County Animal Control, Gladwin, Calhoun, Wexford, Eva Buren Animal Shelter in Manistook, Alvan Humane Society, South Haven, Downriver, Great Hillside Humane Society, Elk Country Animal Center, Copper Country Humane Society, Kelly's Heart-to-Heart Walker, Michigan, Antagonon County Animal Protection, Minomi Animal Shelter, Minomi, Michigan, Friends of Animals of Metro Detroit, Dearborn, Blue Water Area Humane Society, Clyde, Cherryland Humane Society, Huron Humane Society, Alpena, Humane Society of West Michigan, Grand Rapids. The volunteers and everything that is changing is wonderful. We need set policies and practices, and we need those changes. It has been years, there has been plenty of time to have that changed. Those policies that are there need to be changed, and there's no reason why they haven't been changed. There's been, working on them for three years, they were supposed to be handed in to the Board of Commissioners last March. I had to FOIA them to get them, and they're still not what they should be, if all these changes are so positive. So, we need those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Hartness?
Hello, I'm with Advocate Group, and I do want to thank the volunteers for everything that they do with the animals and stuff, especially Mary Freeman with her wonderful videos and posts and whatever, they're awesome. But there's 11 points to a no-kill equation, and volunteers is just one of those 11. And one of those points is a compassionate director, and if a compassionate director was hired at for St. Clair County Animal Control, the rest would fall into place. Yes, it would take time, but that's the key, is a compassionate director and working with the volunteers and working with rescues. All of these could be achieved very easily with a compassionate director. And right now, there is a dog at Animal Control, his name is Waggers. He's been there since February 23rd, and he's been under observation the whole time he's been there, which means he needs medical care. Rescues reached out to ask if we could pull the dog so we could get him the care that he needs and into a foster home, and we were denied. We were told that the dog is not going out of Animal Control unless it's adopted. And so for the last month, the dog has been sitting there under observation in a kennel for 23 out of 24 hours a day. Why the dog can't go to rescue is beyond me. That's another example where if they were working with rescues and had a relationship with rescues, that dog could have been put into foster care. And then at the last meeting, Sheriff Donlin mentioned there was only 76 cats that were euthanized in 2017. Why FOIA'd all the records? And there was 266 cats killed in 2017. Granted, some of those were most likely, you know, owner surrenders, but on April 26th, there were 31 cats killed that day. Intake was on the 25th, and they were killed on the 26th. 31 cats. I'm sure those weren't owner surrenders. There's not somebody going to walk in and say, "Kill 31 cats." If it was a hoarding situation, why doesn't Animal Control work with rescues, reach out to rescues to help them? They don't, because they do not have any working relationships with any cat rescues. And with kitten season upon us, there's going to be a ton of cats, pregnant cats and kittens that are out there. They don't take them in. So that's just going to perpetuate the problem even more. You're going to have more stray cats, more unwanted cats, more cats that are just going to be roaming because they don't believe in TNR and don't have a TNR program. So why can't they limit, you know, they can do intake on cats, but do it on a limited basis. When they're able to take them in, they take them in. If somebody calls and they say they have an animal to surrender, get them on a waiting list. Let them, take them in as they're available, instead of people just dumping them in the streets. That would make sense, that's Animal Control. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Hunter?
I know Stephanie at the Dog Pound. I've got several dogs from there. And she's a kind-hearted soul. I stop in there looking for dogs. Like now, I'm looking for one for my grandson, and I don't see this stuff. This is bull, and I'm being kind about it. This is not true, I've never seen, I've never smelled nothing bad, I've been in there. I go in there about once a month, ma'am. This is wrong, and one thing I don't like, all right, I know I'm not supposed to argue.
Young lady, please. Doug has the floor, Doug, continue.
I've been in there numerous times, and I have never seen these things that these people claim. And I've been all through that building, and it has not happened. I've got a lot of dogs from there. And they have been good dogs, and they get excellent care. care. And you're never gonna convince me otherwise, because I've been there, I've done that, I'm an animal lover. I got dogs, I got probably 50 cats running around the farm, 300 head of cattle or more, and you're telling me I don't know anything about animals? Lady, people, ladies and gentlemen, I know a lot about animals, and I spend a fortune every year taking care of animals.
Pardon me? Doug, excuse me. Doug, would you please address the Board of Commissioners, not the audience?
All right, I will. Sorry about that.
And the audience, allow the person up there their three minutes. Everybody else has had theirs.
All right, and I guess that's all I got to say, is I just don't like to see something unfair and untrue spoken, because I have not witnessed that. I've been around there a long time, and in this county forever. And my family's been there for over 150 years. We've been involved in everything, and this has never happened before, and it's not going on now. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. It looks like some of you are getting ready to book out of here. You're welcome, too. The sheriff has an opportunity to address us in a few minutes, if you want to stay around for that. But no unfinished business, so we're gonna move into new business for the sheriff. If you would like to address the board sheriff, under Sheriff Updates, please.
Just a couple of quick things that I will touch on. It's about a month ago, there was the accusation of one of the employees lying on the stand. I turned that over to Lieutenant Paul Reed to investigate, and I do have my findings I'm gonna provide for the board tonight. This stems from an incident March 29th of 2017, approximately a year ago this month. Port Yorin Township, it was an animal cruelty case. Forty-three cats and three dogs were removed from a house. There is a video, audio/video transcript of the hearings, which were in front of Judge Placer. Those were held on June 29th, 2017, before Honorable Cynthia Placer. In this hearing, the defendant, who was represented by her attorney, reached an agreement with the prosecutor's office, where they were, officers were allowed from the sheriff's office and Port Yorin Township to inspect her home for compliance of the ordinance regarding the public health. If the home passed inspection, the three dogs would be returned to the homeowner, and the prosecution of the ordinance violation would be dismissed. This inspection was to make sure the cats didn't go back to the house. Judge Placer asked my employee, the under sheriff, if it was his understanding that if the home passed inspection, the 43 cats from the home would be returned, and then turned over to SNAP. That was his understanding, that's what he agreed to. In retrospect, it wasn't 43 cats, it was 42 cats, and they did go to the homeowner, who then turned them over to SNAP. We have a long relationship with SNAP. One of the cats, and that was on June 13th, 10 days before the hearing, had bit a trustee, inmate trustee out there, it was a feral cat. After a 10-day quarantine, the cat was euthanized. So the dispute was 42 cats versus 43. That's all this was. This was ran by our prosecutor, and obviously, perjury is an intentional act, either written or spoken, and it is under oath. None of this is the case. This is not a perjury. And in our investigation, this is a closed matter as far as we are concerned. I won't address a ton more of your time, other than last week I addressed that policy and our statistics. I don't have them in front of me, but I thought it was four dogs fell within that age range. Two of them, one had bit the owner, the other was sick and dying. We don't have the information of why the other two owners surrendered them. One of the changes is, is on that form now, when they surrender, it will tell us, "Why are you turning this dog over?" Because I listed for you all of the ages of all of the cats last week, if you recall, and I believe it was four fell in there. Two, there was clearly reason why they were euthanized. Two others, I don't know. But that's where we learn, and that's why we change these documents, so we'll know. Now, as regards to a couple of the comments, as you know, we stopped taking cats last fall. Our save rate is 88 percent. So we stopped taking those cats. I provided you my stats, they're indisputable, they're gone off to the state. Also, everybody on the board has toured our Animal Control, and they know it is clean. And it is open for tours anytime anybody would like, and I've always made that public. I'm out there at least one day every week, generally on Fridays, and we have trustees at work seven days a week keeping that place spotless. So, any questions from the board? Otherwise, I'll be moving along.
Commissioners have any questions for the sheriff? Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to further new business. Item 11A is the approval of county dispersments.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments for February 2018 in the amount of $17,025,244.44.
Support. I have a motion and support discussion on county dispersments. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Greitau?
Yes. Item 11B, Internet Service Agreement for the library system.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Internet Service Contract with the Community Education Network in the amount of $81,000 for a term running from 7/1/18 through 6/30/19.
Support. I have a motion and two supports. Thank you, guys. Discussion on this? All in favor? Oh, let's do a roll call, we got a contract on that.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitau?
Yes.
Item 11C, Community Mental Health Board Reappointments.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to reappoint J. Stephen Armstrong, District 2, Jackie Lai, I hope, District 1, Edward Premier, District 5, and Susan White, District 3, to the Community Mental Health Board, each for a term expiring 3/31/2021.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Proclamation celebrating the 50th anniversary, I believe we've already covered that.
Yes.
So we'll just disregard that one. 11E, Contract Approval Request Tellmate LLC for inmate tablet services at the county jail.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the agreement with Tellmate for the inmate tablet services for a three-year term.
Support.
Any discussion? We had some at the committee meeting, and I think all of our questions were answered. Do we need a roll call on that one? Better do a roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Affirmative.
Chairman Greitau?
Yes. Item 11F, Blue Water Riverwalk County Park Development Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 1805, which would approve the DNR Recreation Passport Grant Agreement in the amount of $75,000.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Definitely.
Chairman Greitau?
Yes.
It, just as a side note, it seems like we're going through this rather quickly. If you were here two weeks ago, when we do our committee meetings, we take a lot of time and we delve into these things, we make a lot of phone calls behind the scenes, so this is kind of almost a formality right now, but it seems like we're going quickly. Plus, I know there's some basketball games on, you guys want to get home to, so that's important also. All right, item 11G, Cell 4C and Cell 8 Construction Contract Recommendation.
This time, I'd like to move to award the contract, or the agreement for the construction of Cell 4C and Cell 8 to Stant Escavating Company Incorporated in the amount not to
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Greitau?
Yes.
Item H, Cell 4C and Cell 8 Construction Survey Support Recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I had moved to award the contract for survey support for Cell 4C and Cell 8 Construction to BMG Engineer Surveyors in the amount of $26,300.
Support.
Discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitau?
Yes.
Item I, Columbus Playground Installation Change Orders Numbers 2 and 3.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Change Order 1 through Change Order 3 for the Columbus Playground Installation Contract with Pentura, increasing the total amount of the agreement to $70,290.
Support. I have a motion and support. Those change orders, there was one that was a big credit, and then two more that kind of offset that, so they're just a slight increase, but we've already talked about that. Any other questions on it? Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitau?
Yes.
Item J, Fort Grashit County Park Overflow Parking Driveway.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to award the contract for the Fort Grashit County Park Overflow Parking Driveway Construction to DP Swyhofer Excavating in the amount of
Support.
I have a motion and support. Discussion or questions? Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Definitely.
Chairman Greitau?
Yes.
Item K, Contract Approval Request Title Check LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, well, actually, approval of the renewal of the contract with Title Check for a term lasting from April 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2019.
Support.
I have one quick question for maybe administration on this one. $50 per parcel and 25 for reoccurring parcels, $74 administrative fee, but not to exceed $50,000. Are these per pieces at the top, and the total amount not to exceed $50,000?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Chairman Greitau?
Yes.
Item 11L, Reclassification Senior County Veteran Service Officer.
This time, I'd like to approve the request to reclassify one county veteran service officer position to a senior county veteran service officer position placed in Job Group 2, Wage Grade G.
Okay, and we do have letters of approval from Human Resources and from Finance, so everything works out. Questions or discussion?
I would support that.
Okay, I have motion support. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, done with new business, let's go to the administrator's report.
We continue to work on a plan for our medical examiner's office renovations. We have met with McLaren's staff multiple times, as well as with Dr. Spitz, and we have what we believe is a good, workable plan. However, given McLaren's major construction they have going on, there's a couple things that we are just waiting to determine on what's gonna happen with their west tower before we can actually go forward and see if this plan will work. We're hoping to have something to the board, perhaps by May, for you to look at for your approval. And as part of this process, we are also working with McLaren on having a long-term lease prior to making these construction investments to make sure that we will be protected and allowed to stay there for a long period of time. We, the property we own on Ravenswood, that was purchased by the Drain Commissioner several years ago, we currently have advertisements and notices out that that property is for sale. There was a notice placed in the Times-Herald, and we also had three different parties that we sent letters to because they had expressed interest in it. So if there is anyone interested in purchasing that building and that property, bids are due by April 2nd, and then we will review those, and if there's interest, we will be looking at selling that surplus property.
Have you received any bids as of yet? I saw them in the paper.
I don't know if we have received any bids. We have received numerous phone calls, and there has, there seems to be quite a bit of interest in it, so. Our MAC 7th District meeting is on Monday from 9:30 until noon. If you have not RSVP'd for that, please let me know tonight so we can have you in the count. It will be at the Convention Center, and I believe the presentation will be on specialty courts, given by our court administrator, Mr. McMillan.
May I ask how many of the commissioners are attending? I know I am. Great, thanks.
Yeah, we're the host, I think we should be there.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
We still have a vacancy for a citizen large on the retirement board, so if anybody knows anyone that would be interested in serving, preferably somebody with some investment knowledge, would be great. But that position has been vacant since December, so we would hope to find someone.
I might have somebody.
Good. Reminder, the State of the County is next Friday at 11 o'clock. I believe everybody has already RSVP'd to that, but if you have not, we need to know immediately, because the table assignments have already gone in, but we could make adjustments if necessary. And finally, administration is continually in discussions with a nonprofit for a potential partnership for taking over our animal shelter services. We've had numerous meetings, and we are having active discussions. I hope within the next several months, I'll have a proposal for the board to look at and consider. That's it.
That it?
That's it.
Any questions for the administrator? I'll take a motion then, to receive and file it.
To move?
Support.
Motion and support to receive and file the administrator's report. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Miscellaneous business? Anybody have anything? I would like to just, kind of a matter of housekeeping, kind of remind people that when you come and address the board during your three-minute speech, you should be addressing the Board of Commissioners, not the audience, and we do not engage back at that time. Please do not carry your conversation into the audience, nor should the audience interrupt anybody up there. That's just common courtesy, folks, and I shouldn't have to say that, but I just want to remind, we've got a large group here, and I would assume a lot of you are gonna be back next meeting, so let's just keep it in order. Other than that, I thank you all for coming, all of your comments, they've been recorded, we've got it. Wish everybody a good day, and I'll take a motion to receive and file packets.
To move?